We were waiting for Mr. Keys to get hooked up. But he says he can hear and Frank's getting everybody dialed in on the same page here. And he's going to give us a thumbs up when we're ready.
Thank you.
All right, lost volume or?
I just muted everybody.
Okay. Mel was having trouble earlier when I talked to him. One day will be. Totally. Well, push. Touch a button just but don't. Cause you're still on here. We still see you. What's that? Okay, well.
Mr. President, what was Mel's concern again?
Mel's having trouble getting on.
Oh.
And I, I guess if, I don't have a problem if you want to at least start with our caucus meeting end of it. And if Frank can think we're good enough to at least get the ball rolling here. Yeah, he thinks we haven't, if everybody can hear each other. We're more than willing to start here. I don't know if anybody has anything officially on the agenda that they would like to discuss or comment on this evening. I apologize starting a little late, but that's our technology sometimes. That's how it works, but. And I don't know if they heard me. Okay, is there anything on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, that anybody would like to discuss?
I did talk to Fire Chief Joe about the things that were on for the fire and definitely necessary and definitely took the lowest cost options.
That's great. It's nice to get a grant to help with that. Especially a two and a half a million dollars. I don't know if they can hear you, Mike.
Just in passing, I see we bought another vehicle for, I think it was Water Works for the water department.
Not ours.
We, I saw we bought another vehicle for $30,000 on our. I think so. But anyways, I just want to know some day in time, I'd like to have the city fleet audit it. So we can see how old these vehicles are, how often they're being replaced, how often it'll be necessary to replace them. Just so that we have an ongoing, so say we have a deficit next year, maybe we don't need to buy vehicles next year. We can put it off two years.
Right. And I know we, they did have an audit within the last two years of all of the city's assets and property. And I know our fleet or a lot of our fleet was on the older side. Doesn't mean it still didn't work, but I think we agreed with our capital budget to start replacing some of the older vehicles. That's where some of the garbage trucks come into play and a lot of the public works vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, public works.
Yeah, and Michael will definitely give you an update. I made a note and I know that there is like a plan, so many vehicles a year for police, fire, public works and all that. So I don't have that information with me right now, but we'll definitely get that and get it to council.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, along the same lines of vehicles, people ask me, why are we seeing police cars in Mill Creek overnight? Summit overnight, things like that. I explain to them that, you know, our police officers don't necessarily have to live in the city. But maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you're going to explain, I understand that cars last longer if one person is taking care. I think that might be one of the reasons why we let guys take cars home. But I think the public needs to know more about it, Mayor.
Yeah, I think some police are on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I think those, I think those are the ones that have their police cars at home with them, but I will double check that as well.
If you'll recall, I asked about that at one of the budget sessions because police officers can live up to 15 miles outside the city limits. And I asked the police chief if he could tell us how close, if the officers who live closest to the, the rationale for letting police officers take the cars home was that they would be close in case they had to respond. So I said, do you have information on the geography of where those police officers with the cars live? Of course, as usual, I did not get an answer. I think that's an important thing to know, too. If somebody lives, you know, 14.9 miles outside the city limits and we're saying they need a car because they can get there more quickly, that seems like a a not very good rationale for taking a police car home.
Good point.
Well, they'd be getting to the scene of the crime more quickly, not the city hall. Otherwise they have to come to city hall, get a police car and then go to the scene of the crime.
But do we know, we, we know that 60%, I think it's at least 60% of officers live outside the city limits. It's something that bothers taxpayers and so even if, look at the logic of that. If you want to say, are most of the crimes on the perimeter of the city are, we, we, everybody can do, you know, geo data now. So where are most of the crimes and where are those police cars located? Just another one of my requests for data that has not been forthcoming. And I did ask about that. Probably either at the last budget or the previous budget.
Okay, I made a note of that also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what people need to realize too is how many of these vehicles, if it's like the command staffed or the guy that's a head of a homicide type of situation. If it's five cars going out of the city limits or if it's 10, you know, I guess what, what ramifications it has to the extent to our budget? And if it can be a possible savings or if that actually needs to be done that way, you know? But we appreciate you, you know, reaching out to the chief as well as we can to to possibly get some of those answers. We've tried in the past to, and we have in the past, met with the chief at least quarterly ever since the COVID. Things have changed a little bit naturally, but for the most part, he has been pretty informative to try to answer the majority of council's questions. And Liz is correct that maybe that one we did not get answered over the last year or so.
Okay, everybody. So we're having a little bit of issues streaming to social media. We are still streaming to government access channel. I'll keep working on this and trying to get Mel in. But as of right now, I would suggest you continue with the meeting. I am recording. And I will provide a link for those residents who want to come into the meeting and be heard or just watch for all other purposes.
I think at this point, even though we still have another two minutes before we can officially start, so hopefully Frank can alleviate that issue, but if not, we will start our meeting for a once in a lifetime on time.
Welcome Lori Watson.
Thank you.
Hello.
Did you hear me?
Will he hear you?
Mr. President, you called the meeting to order.
Not yet. We got another minute. I was gonna make sure.
I want to do it early. Just in case Frank can help our technical difficulties with Mel also. Lori, you tell me what to do.
I know I'm bossy already. Everybody was looking at me.
Oh, we're looking at you.
If Mel can't, maybe get his call in, the calling number.
No, you're just doing this. See your armpit. All right. Well, good morning, Mel. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, good evening to you.
I think we will get this meeting started. Lori, we could have roll call and.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 16th, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Wodarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schuff and Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for silence and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Play ball.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 2nd, 2020 city council meeting and bills for payment on September 11th and September 18th. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schuff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wodarski. Okay. We have one letter from a repository sale. It's not up for, for a vote tonight. It's just in advance. This is from Brian Burks. He lives at 1043 East Fifth. He's trying to buy a property at 1047 East Fifth. It says, the property is vacant. There is no structure on it. My plans for the property is to keep it. It's in poor condition. I own the property next door. I saw it on the list when I was down there paying my taxes and I put a bid on it. I've been maintaining the property for the past three years. People throw trash, tires, TVs, anything you can imagine as garbage in that empty lot and I have to clean it up. I have been doing it since ownership. If you can, if you, if anything has cost more than $250 cleaning up all the trash that the people throw. There's actually a giant pile of trash that I put in the middle of the yard that I collected. The city should refund my $250 for the work done in the past three years. And that's all I have.
All righty, that brings us to citizens to be heard. I don't know, Frank has us.
I have two letters.
Let's go with those first if we could, Lori.
This is from Ron Myers. I apologize, I don't have his address yet. He says, I'm not in favor of a citizen review board. I personally think that the body cameras and the fact that we have a good district attorney is far enough to make a fair decision in political abuse, police abuse. People are going to realize when you break the law and if you assault a police officer, there is a price to pay. It's known as how to behave in a civilized society. The problem is we have to keep educating people how to parent. Responsibility as a parent to raise their kids, to do the right thing and not to have more kids than you can afford to raise, right? If people wouldn't break the laws, the 911 operators would, wouldn't get any calls. To keep bending backwards and giving in to these radical idiots that think they can break the law and be left alone is ridiculous. Sincerely, one disgusted citizen, Ronald Myers.
Okay. Lori, I guess moving forward, unless somebody sends a letter in or emails us a letter, if they do not give their address, we are not obligated to read the letter or the citizen concern. Okay?
Okay. Well, the second one doesn't have an address either.
Well, then we just moved forward. I, if they're gonna, and if, like I said, in the future, if we get an email to the clerk's office, we can respond and say, we do need your address. And if they don't accommodate, then unfortunately they'll have to get on Zoom or when city hall's open, come down personally, but it's, you're gonna need their address.
Well, it's probably my fault because I didn't, I didn't ask for it till later this afternoon when I noticed.
Oh, yeah, well, we can save the other one for the October meeting and move forward. So that brings us to, do we have any Zoom? Okay, good.
I don't care. Jasmine Flores.
Hello, Jasmine, you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Hello. Hello, everyone at city council. Do I have to give my address over to Zoom?
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Flores. I live at 1162 East 10th Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16503. I have joined you all today to thank the six to one vote for the public hearing to review the Bayfront Parkway for citizens to voice their concerns on that. That's one of the big concerns that I have as a Lower East Side resident. Currently, we only have two access points to be able to get across to our dock, which is Holland and State Street. I'm a little concerned with a roundabout being put in at State Street, given that I do take the MTA down to the bus to the library. So I'm a little concerned how the bus is going to be able to get down State Street with a roundabout there. So I am very happy with the six to one vote for the citizens at the public hearing this coming Tuesday next, I mean Thursday next week. I also wanted to voice some concern with the police force. I had a counter, I don't want to say protest and action down at Doppin's Landing when there was a Trump boat rally on September 3rd. The police officers were more on the side of the Trump supporters, egging them on, having them rev their engines. The motorcycle vehicles did leave lots of burns inside of the Doppin Landing Road. And it was encouraged by the police officers, which I've seen as odd considering a lot of the, the Trump supporters did not actually live in the city. They were outside. People who drove in for their parade and their motorcycle down to Doppin Landing. I also wanted to voice concern with our current environmental impact of what the current traffic could lead to with our lake. I'm a little concerned with more traffic of vehicles or lake being more toxic. I think we need to focus on cleaning up our lake. It's an attraction. And I think if we want tourism to really come here and cherish our lake, we need to clean it up a little bit more. And I don't think that more traffic along the Bayfront is going to do that. But that's pretty much all I had to say today and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Adam Trot. Please state your address.
Good evening. Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street, second floor. I just want to make a few comments about the upcoming Bayfront Parkway public hearing. The first one is to thank council for standing up and being the voice of the people and asking for this rather than the process that's been going on. As we all know, the process has had very minimal open public engagement and it's been a tightly controlled set of stakeholders that has been running it. And it's good to give the public an opportunity to actually talk about it. So thank you for doing that. There are a lot of shortcomings in the process and we'll illuminate those at the public hearing. I know the recent letter from the mayor and the county executive is kind of pressuring you guys, but believe me, I've had hundreds and hundreds of conversations. The, the residents are very glad that you did this. And you're representing the people that voted you in. So thank you for that. I think it's important to understand that the way this project's been conducted, they put out a purpose and needs statement. And similar to when you read the ingredients on something you're about to eat, the prioritized ingredients are always mentioned first. And in the purpose and need statement, the very first need is and purpose is improve the pedestrian bicycle transit and passenger vehicle connection of the Erie Central Business District and adjacent waterfront property north of the Bayfront Parkway. Now that's recognizing that that's what the public has said is their main priority for the project. However, the proposed design goes backwards. It prioritizes the vehicular purpose and needs and throws the non-vehicular needs frankly, under the bus. Their second, third and fourth is reduce crashes, improve future congestion and improve traffic operations and efficiency. Those are all good goals. We don't have a problem with them as goals. What we have a problem with is what they actually propose makes two, three and four the big ticket item and the prioritized items. And it's similar to what we've seen before. They throw whimsical gestures out there to address the non-vehicular. And we've seen it before. They run out of money before they can even get to it. So we'll be illuminating all kinds of things about those issues, but that's a very fundamental one. And we're glad and thankful that you established a public hearing so we can explain these. And finally, the alternative that many of us have published in the Erie Reader, it prioritizes the residents of Erie and it creates a parkway for the residents to enjoy the Bayfront. And I can tell you, I've traveled enough, when you go to a place where the residents are happy, the tourists love to go there too. So I think when you prioritize the residents, you will accomplish both things and you will also accommodate the tourists. But if you accommodate the tourists as a priority, you're throwing the residents out. And so we're going to explain a lot of this at the public hearing, but again, thank you for doing this. It's, it's an act of political courage that we haven't seen in a while that is wonderful. And we just thank those that have the expertise that have applied it and made this happen. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Trot.
Am I on now?
Hello there. Yes, you are.
Hello. So this is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16502. First of all, I'd like to say, oh, I'm going to preface my comment that I'm not putting any, I'm not in any way disparaging the trash collectors of the city. But Sunday night was trash night in my neighborhood. And, and it's somehow the people in somewhere, not necessarily my neighbors, who are not mature enough to have the proper way to do their political commenting, stole many, many Biden signs in my neighborhood Sunday night. And apparently according to the chair of the Democratic Party, there is a trend that the signs happen to get stolen on garbage night in a given neighborhood. And he does not believe it's the trash collectors either. But it would be appropriate, given this trend, if the police would just kind of increase their presence in the areas that are having garbage night just because of that. But I walk my neighborhood frequently and I was kind of shocked to see how many signs had disappeared since Sunday. So that's my first comment. Second comment is I spoke on the phone today with one of the people that I know who lives downtown and one of the downtown high rises. And he's visually impaired, and his eyesight has been declining over time. And I was so, so saddened to hear him say that he has become reluctant to do much walking around downtown because of how many times he has gotten past the construction signs or the construction signs that aren't there and ended up in the middle of a construction project like by the sweet shop and been in kind of a position where he wasn't sure how to get out of where he was, where he felt unsafe. I was so angry. I was so upset that this person should feel hesitant to go and walk in his own neighborhood because the city cannot figure out how to, to require and implement proper management of construction. I talked to the traffic engineer, Leanne Parmenter, this afternoon. And she and I have a good working relationship, and she is trying very hard. But to say to me, Freda, what are we gonna do? If we close the whole block and we really close it, then how will the people with wheelchairs get around? Well, if the people with wheelchairs get past those signs and they end up by a construction barrier, what are they gonna do? How are they gonna get past that? This is not rocket science. Construction projects should have to demonstrate upfront how they are going to provide safe pedestrian access during the construction process. It shouldn't be an afterthought. And there shouldn't be people who live downtown or who come downtown who are afraid to walk around. This is a person who has decent mobility skills. He should not feel imprisoned in his own neighborhood. It's, it's shameful. Do I have any time left, Lori? What? Minute?
One minute. Yes.
So in the Bayfront Parkway project, there's a lot of ambiguity. What is really gonna happen with the roundabouts? Who is gonna own? Who's gonna control? Who's gonna maintain access of the, of the overpasses? Are the overpasses funded? Are they covered? Are they enclosed? Is that gonna be safe? Would I want to walk in an enclosed overpass? There's a lot of very confusing information about this project, and people do not feel well informed. I'm looking forward to the hearing next week, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Art Leopold. Please state your address.
Hello, this is Art, 531 Apple Grimley, Erie, PA. Honored City Council Persons, gentlemen, gentle ladies, and honorable Joe Schember. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. About three months ago, I had addressed communications to the mayor, which he forwarded to Michael Outlaw and the chief, Dan Spiserni. I had spoken with City Council Persons about police use of force issues. And I wanted to revisit that because calling down to the city clerk today, I found that there's no study session either had or planned on these issues. Now, there are other cities across the country, dozens of them, that have moved to make a change in their police abuse policies. One in particular that's needed in this area, at least to be looked at, is our civilian review board request. Others, we've, we've included that they include in the campaign zero policies to end broken window policing, having community oversight, to limit the use of force, independently investigate and prosecute, community representation, body cams, training, ending of for-profit policing, the end of demilitarization, and of course, last but not least, fair police union contracts. I had an opportunity to look more specifically in that last issue and campaign zero rates, four out of seven criteria on our police contract, which ends the, the end of this year, to be out of line. So that's something we need to look at. I think I said something to Kathy and Liz and some other members of the community on this issue. I don't want this to be forgotten. I know that good things come to those that wait. But I don't want to wait for this. The community doesn't want to wait for this. Every meeting I go to, people want to know what's going on? Can we trust our police and what they're doing? Are the questions being asked and we can't get information? I know a city councilman recently asked for information. They were turned down. Please, City Council, investigate, educate, and act. We're all watching. We all know you do the right thing. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Eric Brazel.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Brazel.
Oh, hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to everyone here. And I'm like a lot of the other speakers about the Bayfront issue.
Mr. Brazel, can we get your address, please?
Yeah, I live at 1025 West 24th Street, Erie.
Thank you.
Like the other speakers, I am thankful for the six to one vote on this issue. It had to have been a little bit of a difficult thing for a lot of those people, but I really appreciate it. It's important. And that's part of that. So I live in Erie. I grew up in Erie, left and lived in numerous other cities and came back. I raised my children here. And but my, and I've been kind of watching this whole Bayfront development. I've been to probably all the meetings that PennDOT had. And because I believe that this Bayfront is a great developmental area for our city, I mean, not many cities have this protected waterway. And, you know, it used to be industrial, but it's kind of gradually becoming something else. And as one of the other speakers said, something about to make it a good place for the residents, and everyone else will follow in it. So the big issue is that the design doesn't solve residents' primary concerns. This is at a time during which many in our community feel like they are not a part of the democratic process. Sure, PennDOT and some of their other contractors provide, provided public surveys, but many of those surveys were pretty limited in their scope, and the surveys led into choices that weren't reasonable or were difficult to understand. And let's face it, this type of infrastructure can be overwhelming for the average person to fully comprehend. The second issue is the expense and total scope of this project. $100 million is a lot of money to simply streamline and increase motor vehicle traffic flow. This design will enable additional cars in an urban area very near Prescott Bay and high populated areas. This brings up three immediate issues: air pollution, water pollution, and the safety of people not in cars. These are three issues that have not been fully addressed in any rational sense that will bring comfort to the majority of City of Erie residents. The third and most important issue is city residents' connection to Prescott Bay. Our connections from our urban areas to the waterfront is most important for our success. In the PennDOT survey, participants overwhelmingly requested improved multimodal north-south connections. These concerns are very secondary in PennDOT's plan. But beyond PennDOT, I mean, this is a big development for our waterfront, but it really doesn't have anything to do with the beauty or, you know, it's attractiveness. It's a lot of concrete and a lot of money. And I would think that what we should really consider is to have, and I know that this is late in the plan here, but really to have, as a lot of other cities that have had amazing success with their waterfronts, is to have a waterfront development organization be involved because we've got a lot of entities that they've got their turf battles and all that sort of stuff. But let's just get beyond that. It's not about them. They're gonna, their businesses are gonna be in here for a while, and they're gonna be gone. But we're gonna be left with the results, so. But, you know, a lot of these waterfront communities have hired agencies, and they developed a successful waterfront plan that was taken over a long period of time that was able to kind of develop. And I think that that would be an important thing. But the big thing is that the, the whole people not in car issue is very secondary to PennDOT. And my feeling is it might not ever happen. So thank you very much.
Okay, Andrea Stelmack.
Sure. Last call for citizens to be heard. Last call for citizens to be heard. Lori, we'll move on with the agenda, please.
Okay, we have an ordinance for final passage. Number 16178, official ordinance number 342020, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $539,636.36 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Revenue is from the FEMA firefighter assistant grant for the purchase of equipment for firefighters by Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. Council file ordinance number 16178, officially known as 342020, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. We have an ordinance for first reading. Council file number 16, oh, motion passes, seven ayes, or seven ayes, zero nays. Council file ordinance number 16179, amending ordinance number 261958 to traffic code in the City of Erie by installation of a stop sign at one intersection. Whereas the city traffic engineer conducted a study on the intersection and provided recommendation for installation of stop signs at the following locations: West 27th Street and Harvard Road, stopping West 27th. Motion by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The five council file ordinance number 16179, having been read, is hereby adopted by first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopted council file ordinance number 16179 by seven ayes, zero nays on first reading. We have another first reading ordinance, council file number 16180, appropriating the sum of $1,081,520,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the following ESG cares, ESG one C2 projects. Motion by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski. The council file ordinance number 16180, having been read, is hereby first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopted council file ordinance number 16180, yays, seven nays, zero on first reading. That takes us to new business.
Do we have a second? First, we'll second it, and then we'll go for separations. We do a second. And any separation councils? Got a separation on number one, Lauren.
Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay. Okay. This is number one. Whereas Luther Manis Jr. has served our country as a sergeant in the U.S. Army, earned two degrees from Gannon University after leaving high school to serve in the army, has counseled countless numbers of students in the Erie School District to help them achieve their dreams of going to college. He's volunteered his time and talents to numerous community organizations, including the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie, and has contributed to the City of Erie's downtown business economy as the founder of Manus Enterprises, owner of the Sunoco Gas Station at East 12th and French Streets. Erie City Council proclaims October 10th as Luther Manis Day for 2020 and perpetuity. Erie City Council also applauds Erie Arts Council and artist Antonio Howard and Caesar Westbrook for their efforts in creating a mural to honor Mr. Manis.
Discussion, Mr. Keys.
I just wanted to separate this out to make sure that we comment on Mr. Manis has literally.
That Mr. Manis has been a member of this community a long time, and he's been a pillar in our community. And he's dedicated his life to public service, along with being a business person here. One of the only black-owned gas stations I hear in this part of the state. And so we just want to salute him and for his service in our armed forces.
Thank you. Mr. Brzezinski?
Definitely. I have one drawing of Luther Manis Day. It should probably be Luther Manis one. It's one of the greatest guys that I've ever had the opportunity to work with as counselors and calling friend. You won't tell me this, but I can tell you, he used to stop at houses at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night after working all day and helping young families fill out those financial aid reports till they could move forward and go to school. If you ask him today, he'd probably say, ah, you know Luther.
Hear me there.
He's the man, and I'm very happy to call him my friend. Congratulations, Luther. Congratulations, Luther.
And I would just add that I'm happy to sponsor this resolution, having known Luther for years. And when Ed was talking about, you know, his, his after-hours work, I worked nights at the newspaper and he would drop by and, you know, he, he would talk about the need for financial aid for the Erie School District students. That need, I know, is still there, so. He pinpointed a need, he saw it through, and I think one of the great, maybe outcomes of this would be that we find other people to carry on Luther's work with those students. He knows the importance of an education. And he has a, you know, a personal biography that's amazing, too. I mean, you know, having talked to him for columns about, you know, racisms, one of the things that, that we're grappling with now, so. Anyhow, I just want to say thanks for those kind words from Michael and Ed and I'm glad we're doing this.
Thank you for sponsoring it. Good job.
Thank you.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That takes us to committee reports.
Thank you, Lori. Ms. Schaff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mayor Joe and colleagues and citizens of Erie, people out there of Erie. I want to say I too am thankful that you sponsored the resolution. I was out walking one evening and Luther and Connie were watching the artists at work and it was just so heartwarming to see that he is in good health and is able to watch this wonderful mural go up. And the dedication is at six o'clock in the evening. There, oh, five, five, five o'clock. And it is also going to be on cam TV, so that'll be a nice day for this coming Sunday as they dedicate the mural. I attended the planning commission meeting and also tried to get, uh, they didn't get, they weren't able to get a quorum for the commission advisory, human HRC advisory board. I do have some issues that are really pressing to me. I am looking forward to the Bayfront Public Hearing yesterday. Liz and I both posted about the Cranberry intersection that Liz hit and I couldn't get across until the cars absolutely passed. None of them were even slowing down. And so, it was Great Minds Thinking Alike night to see that. I'm wondering, I've been complaining about that intersection for several years and, you know, it has moved its way up to now having this, the lights with the sound, but it's not doing anything. So, I'm wondering if we really do need a light there. That's one of my. I also am concerned about the upcoming weather not being conducive to the homeless and people who are outside quite a bit still have COVID going on. And I was wondering if we could perhaps have a study session where we have DHS with us, city mission representatives, St. Pat's representatives, the Refuge Yuma Community of Caring. And so, we're all under the same umbrella addressing the needs as to what will happen this November, particularly this October coming up because of COVID. How are their cots being spaced? Is it, you know, going to be, you know, a safety concern? We don't want them to be overcrowded. I have someone that reached out to me and I told them I would get back to them tomorrow. I definitely want to make sure that we, community, are doing the very best that we can. It just breaks my heart and they couldn't even dine during the COVID issues. I know, you know, we've opened up somewhat, but, you know, night. And to me, I think we have more homeless than we did maybe last year. I'm seeing some new faces that I don't recognize, so. You know, I want to make sure. So, President Jim, I was wondering if we could have a study session on this concern, perhaps in the near future before the snow starts flying. I want to talk to the police. I've been getting a few phone calls about large groups of people still gathering in certain areas on the east side. And I would like to see more of a police presence to advert any possible drug or activity, whatnot. I know that, you know, we're doing our best, but there's still a few, there's certain areas that seem to get targeted more with links that I'm getting. I saw in the news about the West Thirty-seventh Street House and I was disappointed because I've had an issue like that on the east side, too, that it seems like it's just so, so slow before actual help gets done. And then this one, they're having a sheriff sale on Friday, so that would hopefully take care of it. But there, there's gotta be something different than the setup where it goes to the district justice. And, you know, instead of people find, I would just like, just take care of it so the people in the neighborhood don't have to deal with that for a couple of years. And I don't understand that, so that's a concern, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schaff. Thank you, Ms. Schaff. Ms. Allen.
Kathy, thank you for mentioning that property. It was part of the Blighted Property Review Committee meeting that I attended, I think it was a week ago. And I didn't really plan to give a detailed report on BPRC because it's the same thing every month. Blighted properties going before a district justice, a fifty-dollar fine for that particular person who, by the way, doesn't own the property but is living there, and a warrant for the guy's arrest, but has not been arrested. So, thank you for bringing that up. I also want to thank Art Leopold for pricking our conscience about the civilian review board. I just got a PowerPoint presentation from a young man who's a high school student on Black Lives Matter. Why life, why Black Lives Matter? I asked him if I could share it with others and he said yes. He hopes it would be shared. So, if anybody on city council would like to see this, let me know. It's a really well-researched and documented presentation. And that kind of brings me to, I thought a lot about my committee report today and I started thinking about how would I describe myself as an elected official? And I decided that I would say I am a law and order official. By that, I mean that we should follow the rule of law and that we should have orderly procedures for acting in the public interest. For example, just by chance, I found out that the offspring of a city of Erie employee is working for the city as an intern. So, I asked whether it was a paid or unpaid internship. And I got an explanation from the staff members who had employed this intern, but I also got a snarky reply from the parent of this intern claiming that I had somehow insulted the parent by asking a question. The first thing you need to know is that I did not ask this particular parent the question, but somehow the parent found out. How does that happen? Secondly, at a time when the city budget has already been stressed for the usual reasons of expenses exceeding revenue and when those budget issues are further exacerbated by COVID, I have not only a right but a duty to inquire about where money is being spent. I covered the Erie School District for the morning news when nepotism was common in the district. That is why I was so impressed when then Erie School Superintendent Jay Adams vowed to rid the district of such hires. The school district, he said, is not an employment agency. The city of Erie is not an employment agency either. I am told that this intern was the most qualified candidate and that is good to hear. Secondly, I would also say that I am a just-the-facts elected official, just like Sergeant Joe Friday. That is why I am pursuing the facts from every angle about the proposed preferred alternative for the Bayfront Parkway. When Jenny Granger, Pennsylvania Deputy Secretary of Transportation, said at our August thirteenth meeting that, quote, "Planning partners had approached PennDOT about changes to the Bayfront Parkway in 2013," it caught my attention. I believe that that 2013 date is why those in favor of this plan claim that the plan has been studied for seven years. That is not true. I am working on right-to-know requests for PennDOT, the Erie County Planning Department, for the Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority and for the Erie County Convention Center Authority for any correspondence from 2013 to find out who these planning partners were. Unfortunately, due to COVID, right-to-know requests are not being filled at the state level. I'm not sure yet about the county level or the independent authority level. Here are the facts. In May 2016, CZB, the consulting from the produced Erie Refocus Plan the city council would unanimously approve in July 2016, recommended the creation of, quote, "an iconic connection between the Bayfront and downtown Erie." According to CZB, this connection would provide, quote, "the safe and comfortable movement of pedestrians and bicyclists throughout the area." Charles Bukey, in an interview with the Erie Times News, said that this connection should be an attraction that would make this part of Erie a cool destination. Does anyone think that the plan is currently proposed by PennDOT and wholeheartedly endorsed by Erie Mayor Joe Shemberg, County Executive Kathy Dahlke, State Rep. Bob Merce, and U.S. Senator Bob Casey is a cool destination point? How many pre-COVID vacations have you planned to visit roundabouts in a tourist town? CCB gave three examples of iconic connections. Sculpture Park in Seattle, two pedestrian bridges at Penn's Landing in Philadelphia and Ross's Landing in Chattanooga. In November 2017, the Metropolitan Planning Organization received a recommendation from local officials stating that improvements to the Parkway should be a top priority in Erie County. Here's another quote. "Maybe we should make it more like a parkway with a boulevard and landscaping," the Erie Times News reported one person is saying. Who was that person? Do you think it was Lisa Austin? Do you think it was Adam Trot? Freda Tepfer? Maybe Brian Pitzer from All aboard Erie? No, that quote was from Bill Pettit, District Executive for PennDOT's Northwest Pennsylvania Region. Pettit also noted that the new design would have to address crashes, especially those at East Twelfth and Bayfront. Please explain how our roundabout at the convention center entrance and at Holland will reduce crashes at East Twelve Street? Or how it will prevent crashes that occurred at Twelfth and Lincoln, that was a fatal one, at Bayfront and Green Garden, at Eighth and Bayfront, and at Cranberry and Bayfront in 2009, 2010? Those are the only years I've been able to check so far from newspaper clippings, which is why I have also asked the administration for EPD crash reports on the Parkway for the last five years. So, how did we get, go from a proposed boulevard to the preferred alternative we are saddled with now? I have a lot more work to do before and after our public hearing, but that is the time for citizens to speak. This is why I use my committee time to speak about this. Again, I want to say that quote from Bill Pettit, who is now retired from PennDOT and is actually on the Port Authority Board. "Maybe we should make it more like a parkway with a boulevard and landscaping." How did we not end up with his wisdom? And also, Kathy Schaff, not only do great minds think alike, but I actually had written Great Minds Think Alike when I was going to finish this up about how we both, on the same day, happened to go walk or go to the Bayfront Parkway to try and show, show the story about what needs to be done there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Witherspoon.
Oh, am I, oh, yeah, I'm on. Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, no report other than that I agree with Ms. Frether and her concerns about the individual who's, has low vision downtown. And that is very, very important and very dear to me because I have AMD as well. And I want to jump on that bandwagon with her and follow up with the administration. I think when we award contracts, we should put something specifically in there to deal with the concern that she expressed. I had an experience today similar to that, not with construction, but just similar. So, I thank her for that. Also, I thank Mr. Adam Trot for his presentation this evening. I think it was very well put together and I intend to stay on top of that one as well. Erie Housing Authority is doing quite well. The Quebec Police is doing an outstanding job there. I have never seen a police-community relationship that has fostered throughout the years at the Housing Authority, where folks are not afraid to come out on their porch and sit any longer like it was when it was called something else other than John Heran Apartments. So, they're doing a good job and that's all I have for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hello there, Dave.
First, I want to congratulate Mr. Manis. Again, thank you for your service to our country and also to our community. I've seen Mr. Manis at many events downtown throughout the county and he's always a very nice to talk to, very humble man. So, again, thank you and congratulations. It's a beautiful mural. I thank all the funders and also the artists that are putting that mural together. Great, great job and definitely something to see that hopefully everybody can continue to enjoy. For my report, I have two items I wanted to mention. Historic Preservation Task Force, just a quick update is the first item. July twenty, twenty twenty-one is going to be the end date for the committee. That's still a long way off, but we're still, we're kind of getting planning to, to how our final report be and then what are our goals, how we're going to kind of carry it out. One item is the certified local government, which I spoke about before. That's the designation to get so we can get preservation funding from various groups from the, from the state. Neighborhood Toolkit is another item that we're, on the committee we're talking about. It's, it's a toolkit designed to help neighborhoods understand and plan for their historic. It's a toolkit designed to help neighborhoods understand and plan for their historic preservation in their neighborhoods. We're looking at the amending preservation or preservation ordinance. Right now, the ordinance is kind of just standing still. There's no applied area through the city. So we're going to look at making that ordinance much better and directing it to a certain area of the city at some point in time as we go forward. Also, some good news is Erie Downtown Partnership received a grant to create design guidelines for our city. So that's something that was a priority of this committee. So that's, that's, that'll be good to have. So it'll help recommend to various people making improvements and what might be a good thing to do to improve your property, especially with keeping significant history if they choose to do so. The second item is I attended the Erie Parking Authority Board Meeting yesterday. The engineers gave a, consultants gave a parking ramp physical conditions report. I won't go into detail of that, of course, but there's a five-year maintenance plan and a $10 million total. Items include structural repairs, waterproofing, repair drainage, and so forth, as everyone could imagine. Their other maintenance projects continue. Their mobile app, which I think a lot of people use, the Meter Easy, is going to be renewed, but they're going to make different upgrades to it. So that's always an improvement. I use that quite often, as do many. And the last item, and I mentioned this before, is the, we've discussed the Municipal Services Agreement. They're researching what Allentown and Lancaster has done to operate their parking facilities, possibly looking at, you know, parking enforcement and so forth. And I know they're planning to submit a proposal soon for consideration. So we could expect some news there to look at and to see if it fits everybody needs. And I guess the important part there also is that, you know, that it's very important for the city and also very important for the Parking Authority that you both be successful. So we need to support each other. And a successful Parking Authority makes it a successful city. The last I wanted to mention is the public hearing. Thank you for a lot of people who have contacted a lot of council members and been speaking about this. It is a substantial investment of taxpayer money, so very important. We want to make sure and make the plan the best it can. Again, right now, it's, it's just a drawing. It's a design. So, you know, we're going to get input to see what people think and see what ideas come about. And then we could decide how to move forward. But I definitely think it's good input and will worth the time. Thank you.
David, I just wanted to mention, since you brought up the historical preservation at Erie's own Masonic Temple,
Yes.
was added to the list. So take that away.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I forgot to mention that. Yes, the congratulations to the owners of the building for getting a historical register. It's a great building. I don't know if anyone's been in there lately, but it's incredible. It's really, a lot of things haven't changed in the building. It's amazing how it's kept up. And I want to congratulate the owners of that building, definitely. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
No problem. Thank you. Mr. Keys.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have an official report. I have a few upcoming meetings that I'll have a report by next month on. But I did want to, yesterday, earlier this week, I drove by the West 37th Street property. And yes, it is a mess out front. But let us not, after hearing the story, let's not forget about the human tragedy that is within this story. Somebody is losing their property. Somebody is losing their home. Somebody is losing their place, a habitation. And so if you look at it at the point that I'm being thrown out, my property is being sold, I have to get my stuff out of this place. Where do I take it? And so we should not be too cavalier to judge. You know, I think a Saturday cleanup over there with a little community input would put the yard right back where it should be. You know, it wasn't, it would take some work and a few hours and a few people. But I think that the more community minded we are, for all the energy we spent calling the news, we could have cleaned it up. Other than that, you know, we have, in the newspaper today, the body cameras are coming online soon. And so we look forward to that. They estimated that they'd have them by October 1st, which is just a few weeks away. And so I look forward to that. And I think that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you there, Mr. Key. Mr. Brzezinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a whole lot. The old baseball park is closed, but so many of our young guys that we watched play over there on 10th Street are playing for the Big Tigers today. And for the past couple of months, guys like Prattis, Willie Castro, and go right down the list. And they're all becoming real Tigers. Not that I'm a Tiger fan. But it shows the connection that we have to the real world. Kids that went to 10th Street and watched ballgames can see the guys that they watched play here in Erie on the big screen. And that's a beautiful, beautiful thing. Hopefully, next spring, we'll have them back with us. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot. One thing, somebody made a comment about me smiling here. My grandmother always said, "You're much better off with a smile on your face and let people wonder what you're up to and walk around looking like an old grouch." So I will smile. You don't like it, don't look at me. Good night.
Okay. Very brief myself. Our finance director did call today. It was, I guess, the mayor is looking to get a study session or two in place with council to determine what options we may have with the upfront money that we're getting from the Water Authority. I did make a suggestion to them that maybe at our finance meeting in October, our first meeting on October 2nd, we can use a finance meeting as one of our discussions. See how we make out there and then possibly have a study session to follow and follow up with our thoughts and ideas on what we do with that money. To alliterate on the property on West 37th, I have a feeling, Mr. Keys, you may not have been aware, but there's been issues there two years, three years ago. This has been an ongoing issue. And because of what we have in place, which possibly may need to be examined to see if we can do something different. They've been to the District Justice at least two times. Whatever fines were put on, I'm not sure of. But this has been an ongoing issue in that neighborhood. And unfortunately, what may hurt the one person may bring closure to the neighbors and the neighborhood itself because this has been an ongoing issue that they've been trying to alleviate for quite some time. With that being said, I just want to welcome Lori, Lori Gary Warren here, our new city clerk, or Warren Watson, I'm sorry. But be patient with us. We're not that rough and tough, but we're looking forward to working with you and getting our job done in the correct manner and making city business move forward as always. Thank you. Mayor Schumber, are you with us?
I am here. Thank you, President. Was actually a couple of things. I look forward to the study session next Thursday on the Bayfront Parkway. There seem to be some maybe misunderstandings about what was trying to be accomplished there. And I look forward to talking that through in some detail. As I think Michael mentioned, the body cams, we're hoping to have those out running by October 1st, which is less than two weeks away. And the police are already going through training on it. And we have some police study sessions ready. We just need to schedule the time to do them with regard to that. And we're not trying to put it off or anything, right? I know you guys have been really busy with a lot of study sessions. But as soon as you're ready, we're definitely ready to kind of talk that through with you as well. Had a couple interesting things this weekend. Well, first of all, on Friday, September 11th, the police and firefighters organized a ceremony down at the Public Library by the 911 Memorial there. And that was very moving. And to think that that happened 19 years ago, you know, September 11th, 2001. It's just amazing how the time's gone by, but everybody there remembered exactly what they were doing when that happened. It was something that just kind of stuck with all of us. On Saturday, Bishop Brock had put together a door-to-door on the lower west side. He had done that on the lower east side a couple of weeks ago. And the purpose of that was to get masks into the hands of the people there and also encourage them to do the census and tell them how they can do it and that sort of thing. I think we had about 100 people there, including a number of policemen and a lot of firefighters. I think there were three or four different firefighting rigs there that helped give people rides around the neighborhood and stuff like that. So that was a very good experience as well. I do look forward to working with you two on the Water Authority and what's going to be done with that money. We're probably about five to six weeks away from getting the money from what I've heard recently. And Jim, you mentioned a study session. Did you say October 2nd? That's a Friday. So would it be after the next council meeting? Is that?
Mayor, I was muted, but I was thinking if we could use our finance meeting in October to do that, have that discussion, and then follow up with the study session.
Yeah, I thought that would be October 7th, after your council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had the right date for that.
Mr. President, asking if we have a plan for opening City Hall. I forgot to ask.
There's no plan for opening City Hall right now until we have, we're going to need to redo a lot of things at City Hall. You know, we need some sort of check at people when they come in. So I don't, we have consultants coming in to do that as well. And the Treasurer's Office has done a lot of work. They've kind of have a more detailed plan for how to keep their employees safe from COVID-19. I really expect that it's, we need, I'd really like to see a vaccine in place before we open. And there's nothing people can't do by phone or the internet. And it's very efficient doing it that way. You don't have to drive to City Hall. So that's the plan right now. And that's kind of, that's what it's been. And anytime you have a question like that, don't hesitate to ask me. I'm always happy to answer them. I'm going to be on the radio tomorrow morning with Alan Carpenter at 8:00. If you want to listen in, and here we get beat up a little bit by some of the calls. You can do that.
We've heard it.
I kind of enjoy it, to be honest. It, you know, gives me a new perspective on things. That's always good. I want to join everyone that talked about Luther Manis. He is a wonderful person. I've probably known him for at least 20 years now. And I look forward to that dedication ceremony Sunday at 5:00 PM by that really neat mural that's completed. We have a couple of topics for tomorrow's press conference. Our firefighters have received four grants for various things. We're going to talk about those in a lot of detail. And then with only 13 days left to complete the census, we're going to be, again, trying to encourage people that may not have done it yet, please be sure to get the census done. So I think that covers everything I wanted to say. Thanks a lot. Have a good evening.
Thank you for joining us this evening there. Mr. Betsa, you still with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Well, when I turn on the camera, it tends to ruin my connection. So just from a number of these meetings, it seems to work better. I just had one real quick item to report. Councilwoman Allen raised some questions about police vehicles going home. I've had that issue in the past come up. I do know a little bit and I can try to share it, but ultimately, I will get that information. I have a couple of meetings with the police in the next couple of days regarding contractual negotiation issues. And so I'll be right there. I'll just get that information and I'll send that to all of council so that you'll have that. From my limited experience, I know that it's limited to certain safety positions. I think it's major crime detectives, bomb squad, SWAT, and command staff. But I don't know the specific number of cars and where they're at. But I will get all that and then I'll circulate that within the next couple of days. Certainly within a week, you'll have a memo from me on that. That's all I have.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Witherspoon.
That issue has been going on ever since I served with Mr. Bagnoni. He has raised that issue time and time again, and it continues to go on. Hopefully, we're not seeing police cars at the grocery stores like they used to do, et cetera. So that's a good follow-up. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you. Well, with that, I think we'll adjourn this evening. Unless, Ms. Watson, any comments?
Jim, can I ask one question of Frank? I know that we've been getting some like chat messages and somebody sent a Facebook message about, if Frank can tell us, there were technical issues with putting this on Facebook? And can you just let us know so we can let the public know? Can, will they be able to watch the whole thing on YouTube? I just was a little unclear on where the glitch was and just if we can let people know where they can watch this if they want to hear, would like to see it.
So there was a struggle with the AMI key on Facebook. However, we didn't report this to the community. And at the conclusion, it'll take Zoom a little bit to catch up. But after that, we'll motion the other house also from the new platforms and on.
So in other words, it will make it on. It's just going to take a little time.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, I know everybody wants to leave, but now I think Freda also sent a message saying that we have to be clear that the thing next week is a public hearing, not a study session. So there will be a transcriptionist there, just so we, you know, that matters. So thanks, Freda.
Ms. Watson.
I just want to say thank you for having me. And I'll try and remember to say the votes when they're done from now on.
You'll be fine. Thank you all. Good night.
City Council adjourns at 8:44 PM. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schott, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
No.
And Jim, I wasn't downplaying, but if you're a tenant and you've been paying your rent